We will resume the meeting at 7:25 PM. Please rise to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to your republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome trustee Drucker.
Thank you.
Would you be kind enough to do our quote roll?
Certainly. Anthony Cronacio is absent. John DeGrace.
Present.
Arnold Drucker is present. George Gordon.
Present.
Linda Green.
Present.
Wanda Jackson is absent. Edward Powers.
Present.
Donna Tuman is absent. Kathy Weiss.
Present.
Jennifer Borzum.
Present.
Mr. Chairman, we have a call.
Thank you so much. Do I have the motion to approve the December 8, 2015 minutes?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Motion carries. Reports to the Senate Committee of Finance, Capital, John, would you be kind enough?
Okay, whereas orthopedic and sports associates of Royal Health, with its principal place in business, a two or five folder farm boulevard Woodbury, New York, has offered to donate a digital Kodak CR800 for refuse system to the radiology technology program of the Allied Health Department to Nassau Community College, and whereas the estimated value of donation is approximately $13,950. Whereas, program has determined that this donation will enhance its current equipment inventory, and the college greatly appreciates this donation. Therefore, be resolved that the Nassau Community College Board of Trustees accept the donation, and gladly accept it.
So do I have a motion to consider this item?
So move.
And do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Any absolutions? Motion carries. Kathy, would you like to do?
Of course, because I just put a second candy in my mouth. But I'll be happy to do it. Resolve that in recognition of distinguished and meritorious service to Nassau Community College, and upon the recommendation of the President of Nassau Community College, the following named retired faculty members of Nassau Community College, who retired after attaining the academic rank of professor or associate professor, are hereby granted the permanent academic title of Professor Emeritus, with all of the privileges and rights accruing thereto. And this time, I am going to apologize in advance, because it's a list of 58 named, and those people do know that they have retired, but we certainly, I certainly think they'll understand why I'm not reading all 58 names.
Well, actually, I'd like to make a point. If you want, I'll go every other with you. Let's, I would like to read the names.
Okay, because I did it for tenure, but I'll be glad to. Of course, I have a second candy in my mouth. Calvin Andrew.
Mary Ardis.
Well, here I'm going to make mess names. Lawrence Benedict.
Lisa Bastiels.
Robert Battle.
Theodore Bennett.
Stanley Burke.
Jane Brody.
Angela Bruno.
Paula Carlo.
Philip Chaffetz.
Shol Cohen.
Richard Conway.
Deborah DeSanto.
Kathy Ectel.
Jerome Alabogan. Alan Bogan.
Patricia Falk.
Anne Fitzgibbon.
Vincent Gianassio.
Shepherd Gorman.
Marilyn Gottgen.
Barbara Gregorio.
Norman Harris.
James Hoyt.
Kathy Jensen.
Bernard Katz.
Lucy Landisberg.
Deborah, Deborah Levine.
Richard Lukian.
Julio, Julio Marzano.
Donna Milkretz Sidell.
Myrna Nashman.
Ralph Nazareth.
Francis O'Conne.
Charles Owusser.
Mary Ann Pervilous.
Patrick Rayhin.
Lance Rigano.
Linda Rohan.
Filomena Romano.
Jeffrey Rosenfeld.
Sharon Ruslin.
Mary Ann Helmer Sol.
Roseanne Scarpelli.
Joanne Schmidt Festa.
Frederick Stonefeld.
Robert Schroeder.
Ines Shaw.
Donna Sparber.
Marcia Spiegelbin.
Robert St. Angelo.
Joanne Thiessen.
Michael Tortaro.
Henry Williams.
Melinda Weiss.
Peter Zito.
And that ends the list.
James Burns.
Oh, that's the second I'm going to speak on. Apologies for the mispronouncing. Because I saw two names on here, people that I know well.
You butchered quite a few of them.
Thank you.
It wasn't trustee Weiss, it was the candy.
Well, it's a cough drop, it wasn't you.
Do I have a motion to consider this item?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Any objection? Motion carries seven to zero.
And if I had known I was reading them, I would have made sure somebody told me how to pronounce them all.
Want to just continue and do Administrator Emeritus?
Might be happy to. I'll just go to the resolve.
Yeah.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees of Nassau Community College hereby expresses gratitude to James T. Burns Jr. for his years of service as Vice President, and dedication to Nassau Community College, and upon the recommendation of the President of Nassau Community College, does hereby grant him to the permanent title of Emeritus, with all of the privileges and rights accruing thereto.
Do I have a motion to consider this item?
I'll move it.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Motion carries. Jennifer, would you be kind enough to do the next item?
Sure. It is off that the Nassau Community College Board of Trustees adapts the college's new sexual harassment policy as written by the Academic Senate Affirmative Action Committee with input from the college's administration, and as approved by the Academic Senate.
Do I have a motion to consider this item?
I don't move.
The motion.
Okay. Trustee Green and trustee DeGrace. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Any objection? Motion carries seven to zero. Report to the interim president, please.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Happy New Year, welcome back. Since we last met, back in December, at least one of the thorny items of 2015 has been at least partially resolved, and that's a topic that we've talked a great deal about at our meetings, the replacement of lines. I mean, a number of people retired, and as you all know, there was a debate about how many lines we could fill, how many lines we needed to fill, and after a great deal of discussion, a great deal of consultation, a great deal of planning, the determination was made that a total of 35 lines were replaced, 35, representing seven from the fall, that is, individuals who retired in the previous summer, those positions were replaced in the fall of 2015, 22 more academic lines in the spring, plus six student personnel lines, for a total of 35 lines that were replaced. Of course, we all wish it were more. There were certainly some positions that were debated long and hard, determinations were made that didn't meet with everybody's approbation, but we do believe that it was a good process, and that we've done the very best we can under some challenging financial circumstances that I'll speak to in just a minute. I'd like to thank Dr. Saunders and our four academic deans for the process, and of course, all of our chairpeople for taking part in that. We hope that come next fall, we will be able to fill more lines, and as I've always promised, this has been a multi-pronged approach, where we will continue to try to pick away at these for as long as we can. My optimism on being able to fill more of those lines next fall is in fact increased by something that I'm very happy to announce to the college community tonight. Probably the thorniest topic of 2015 was the debate that we took part in relative to the bonding of the retirement incentive. Just to catch everybody up who might not have been here, when we entered into an agreement with the NCCFT on the retirement incentive, the hope was, the thought was, the prediction was, that it would be a 10-year bonding that the county would approve. When they came back to us, unfortunately, they only approved a two-year bonding of about $7 million. So, it went from payment of just under $1 million a year for 10 years to payments of over $4 million for two years. I think Ena Resnick has used the analogy very well of, you know, having your bank come to you and telling you that your 30-year mortgage is now a five-year mortgage, and please adjust accordingly. We could have done it, it would have been very difficult, but as we contemplated filling those lines, I can't not tell you that we were very concerned about the amount that we would have to pay for that retirement incentive and how we were going to do that. About two months ago, Dr. Gordon approached John Kamen and just mentioned, somewhat conversationally, but I think rather pointedly, that the two years was not what we had anticipated, and in fact, we would benefit, the college would benefit, from a bonding of more than that. He turned us on it, and I want to thank Chuck Cottola and Ena Resnick, who wrote letters, made visits, I attended the legislature, and I'm very happy to report that the last meeting of the Nassau County Legislature, our bonding was changed from a two-year bond to a four-year bond. So to continue with that math, that means now, instead of two payments of just over $4 million, we have four payments of just under $2 million, a marked difference, and that's why I'm a little bit more optimistic about next year. It's not everything we had hoped for, but it's certainly a better financial picture. It loosens the noose just a little bit that we were feeling, and I hope that as we plan ahead for the fall of 2016, that it will further inform the efforts that we make to fill even more lines, and I'm more optimistic in saying that than I was last, in December. A couple of other announcements, oh, and by the way, the legislature approved that, and so did NIFRA. That was an additional step that we went through, we weren't quite sure whether they had jurisdiction over our finances or not, but as long as they were approving it, we let them have jurisdiction. Middle States is coming up. On March 13th, 14th, and 15th, our visiting committee has been appointed, and in fact is posted on the college's website, under the Middle States section on the website, as is the final copy of the full report that will be mailed, I believe tomorrow, to the members of the committee. There'll be lots more information about Middle States as we get closer to those dates, but feel free to take a look at that final report and also to peruse the individuals who will be visiting the college in mid-March. I'd like to also congratulate all of our faculty who have been named Emeritus. I got the easy part of this job because I don't have to read all their names, thank you very much, but there are 12 other names that I would like to read, because I've also been made aware that 12 of our students have been nominated through Phyllis Curlin's office for a SUNY Chancellors Award, and I've taken it to, I've decided to meet with all of them to prepare the letter that I will be sending to endorse their application. And those meetings have been absolutely wonderful. If there's one theme that goes through all of the meetings, and I've had 10 of the 12 of them already, 10 of the 12 who I have to meet with, because two of the people I don't feel I have to meet with, I'll explain that in a minute, is that they wish this were a four-year college. They wish they could stay, because as they talk about the faculty, they talk about the experiences they've had, yes, there's a little bit of trepidation about going anywhere new, but boy, there is a real comfort level here, and a real appreciation, and as one young man said to me today, he's looking for another college that he can find to be inspiring, because that was the way that he labeled his experience here at Nassau, and I thought that was great. The 12 students who have been nominated, and who will be nominated for SUNY Chancellors Award are Jennifer Borzum, who I did not feel the need to meet with to write a letter because I had an opportunity to write with Jennifer, Frank Catrum, Caitlin Friar, Tiana LaRosa, Stephen McMahon, Randy Perez, Elizabeth Bucciari, Juliana Dykstra, President of our student government, another student I've gotten to know pretty well, Caitlin Yaffe, Sarah Mayel, Julian Palone, and Edward John E.J. Rodriguez. Some wonderful meetings with them, and very, again, if Randy Perez thought this place was inspiring, these meetings have been inspiring as well. The last item I have to report is I've been invited to represent the college at the Governor's State of the State address tomorrow, and I will be driving up to Albany Brighton early tomorrow morning, anxious to hear about the state's commitment to public education. Those reports over the last couple of years have not been that great. Hopefully, we will see a bigger commitment this year financially. It is an election year, that gives one hope, and I hope the governor will make some positive statements about public education tomorrow, including community colleges, which he did not have very many nice things to say about last year. I hope he will have some more pleasant things to say tomorrow, and I'll be happy to report back at the next meeting. Thank you.
All right, we're going to continue on with the speaker's list. Phyllis Curlin.
We get presents.
I thought this was only at the beginning of the year.
Yeah.
Right, thank you, Phyllis Curlin from Student Personnel Services. We had freshman orientation today, it was very successful as always, we had about 200 students who came, and they walked around the campus, learned about our student services, about our academics, and I particularly want to thank the 17 administrators and faculty members who came today and spoke to the students in small groups of 15 to 30 people about Nassau and what it takes to be a successful college student. Some of them are here tonight, an example was set by Maria Canzati, our Vice President, as well as, let's see, I'm seeing Chespa Markin, our Red Straw, who is there, Dean Cornbluth, who is there, and as I said, a total of 17 people, and we thank them very much. And these are what we gave the freshmen, and here you'll find some frequently asked questions about the college, tips on how to put your best foot forward, calendars about the college, list of clubs, and a little gift, it's a flashlight, I just want to tell you, in order to open it, in order to turn on, you have to open it, unscrew it, and take out the plastic tab, so don't think that we're giving people dud flashlights, you want to open it properly, but we really appreciate all the cooperation. And I also want to thank the board on one other thing. I am the Chairperson of the Affirmative Action Committee Subcommittee on Sexual Harassment Education, and on behalf of our large Subcommittee of 25 people from all across campus, we thank you for approving this policy tonight, which puts us in compliance with New York State and federal law, of course, I understand they're changing that as fast as we can manage to comply with it, but we're doing our best, and telling you that, oops. And I just wanted to tell you that the Affirmative Action Committee remains a model of how administration and faculty can work together, and we need to thank our affirmative action officer Craig Wright, our college attorney Alan Brodsky, in particular, for their assistance and actually their direction on writing this policy. It really couldn't have been done without their firm hand, and thank you very much for approving it.
These are destined not to get you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Phyllis.
Okay, David?
Okay, I have a point of order I'd like to start with. As a essential part of the governance structure of the college, the leaders of the Senate should be extended the courtesy of being able to speak for more than three minutes, so I ask the board to respond to this request before I speak.
We'll take it under advisement, just keep it in three minutes for right now.
Okay. Well, good evening, I hope everyone had a happy, healthy holiday. I have two topics to address with the board and get in the public record. First, I want to correct the president's statement, I'm kind of disappointed that you indicated that Phyllis's office was responsible for the Students Chancellors Award. That actually is part of the work of the Senate's Student Activities Committee, there's a lot of members on the committee, Phyllis's office does do a lot of work making that happen, but I would hope that you would acknowledge the Senate's work in the future.
Please allow me to acknowledge the work of the Senate.
Is that my three minutes, please?
No, not at all, I want to do it right away. Please allow me to acknowledge the work of the Senate, and I will be more careful about who I thank.
Thank you. Okay, first is the need for transparency of the presidential search. On behalf of the college community, we request that the board conduct the presidential search more transparently. Specifically, we request that the board follow the SUNY guidelines for the presidential searches for community colleges. Section 4 recommends steps by doing the following. One, issue a timetable for completing the search, that's step eight, distributing a system for rating the qualifications of candidates as devised by the committee, step 12. Posting the interview schedule, including dates and involvement of the various college constituencies, such as trustees, faculty, students, administrative leaders, staff, and collective bargaining unions, step eight. Right now, the college community is in the dark, we have no idea what's going on with presidential search, and again, that's really against SUNY policy. Two expectations of the new interim chief counsel. We would like to welcome our new interim chief counsel, chief counsel Kate Murray to NCC. I'm a resident of the town of Hempstead, and I appreciate your service as supervisor. Of special note, I'm an expert in water, I'm a water resource scientist, and I can attest to the town's water departments as being one of the best in the state, and it supplies Nassau Community College with its water, by the way. The Senate Executive Committee asks that the BOT adhere to the college's affirmative action plan, which has just passed it tonight, regarding hiring administrative staff, and commit to proceed with the full affirmative action search as per college policy. When Chuck Cottola joined NCC in 2002, he was well positioned to lobby the county government, since he was living a position of counsel to the county legislature. Almost immediately, he was able to get the county contribution to be increased by 3.9% instead of the 1.9% that was proposed by the county executive at the time. This increase compounded each year, lasted until 2009, and provided over $20 million of extra funds to the college. For the last six years, the county contribution has been frozen at 2009 levels. The county contribution now is only 24% of our revenues, requiring our students to cover almost 40% of the college revenues. Interim Chief Counsel Murray is similarly positioned as Chuck was 14 years ago, to get the county to provide an increase that is equal to the inflation rate. She has perhaps even better connections than the current, with the current county leadership than Chuck had. Accordingly, the board should share our expectations, that we should expect better support from the county this year. Perhaps more important, actually, I'm going to skip that because I was dealing with the bonding, and I was glad that you were able to resolve that, I want to thank the board and Jorge for resolving the bonding issue.
David, what makes you think that the search committee is not in compliance with SUNY guidelines? How would you know?
I didn't say in compliance, I said, I said to be in compliance with the guidelines, yes.
And what makes you think we're not?
We have no information. We have no information.
But you made a statement that we're not.
Well, we don't know. Can you give us the reason? Can you give us the information? Can you tell us?
Why would you be privy to the names of 79 people who apply?
I didn't ask that.
And when we interviewed them, why would you be privy to it?
All right, I didn't ask that. You know what, we wouldn't even know.
That's what I asked you to think about transparency.
We wouldn't even know that you interviewed, we wouldn't even know that you interviewed people.
You're not supposed to.
If it wasn't for the student president who said, "I'll see you on the weekend", and then trustee Jackson.
There are confidentiality issues here.
We don't need to know the names, we want to know what's going on. Are we going to have a president? We haven't had one.
There's a search, guys, guys, guys. Search committee.
David, all right, hold on, one second.
You don't think we have a right to have a college president?
You have a right to trust the search committee that includes members of your constituency.
But we don't know what's going on.
Do you think members of your constituency?
We don't, they're not allowed to say anything to us.
Because for obvious reasons.
Exactly, so we don't know what's going on. How is to the campus what's going on?
David, I've no clue, you have no. One second. The process with presidential search has been proceeding under the guidance of SUNY, under the leadership of trustee Drucker and trustee Jackson. They will be posting, we haven't done anything now because you guys are on break, as they go back in, they will start publishing the dates to bring back the campus interviews. Right now, and Brandy has to schedule with everybody to make sure that they can all come back at the appropriate time. So right now, it's a, they're trying to get a scheduling issue settled.
That's all we have, is to inform.
And it'll be posted, and in due time, it'll be put out to the website so everybody's made aware. The committee has acted, it's been, been mentioned to me that it's been done very, very well. They will be bringing.
Inform us, please, inform us.
David, the process, the process. You're only informed when you're supposed to be informed. SUNY is, there are SUNY members who attend our committee meetings, and SUNY tells us when we can release names, they tell us.
We don't want to know the names.
David, David. They tell us the process and the process. Just so that you know, we, we as board members have two members of our board serving on this committee. We don't have the information either, and I think it's a problem to understand that three members, I apologize.
Three members of the board, please. So you may share the same concern we have?
No, because I entrust the members, our constituents, who are representing us, to get back, four members, including our students, to get back to us and tell us the timetable at the appropriate time. We, I just want you to understand that it's not the faculty that doesn't know, we all have, we all have people on that committee. When that committee is prepared to share, it will share it with all of us. We don't have any dates either, we don't have any information, and that's done so that that committee can work without pressure from anybody.
David, honestly, I've kept myself at arm's length from this process, and when trustee Drucker and trustee Jackson release the information, that is the point when it is made public to us. Until such time, it is kept under wraps. So, there's no conspiracy, it will, it will unfold in the meantime.
I did not say anything that there was conspiracy or things were being done inappropriate. All I asked for was transparency.
Well, you know as much as chairman Gordon, you know as much as he knows.
Okay, okay, but that's a problem, I haven't had presidents.
It's not a problem. Excuse me, you interpreted it as a problem.
Can I just say something?
Student policies recommend that you keep the campus informed of the process, not the names, yes.
David, and this is for all who are in the public eye, okay? I am sick and tired of everyone commenting that we haven't had a president here for three years. Yes, we have not had a de facto president, but we've had acting presidents, and we've had interim presidents that have led this college over the last three years. This college has never been devoid of leadership, it's been devoid of a title, and devoid of a person, and maybe some other things that go along with it, but we have never been devoid of leadership.
We do respect, we haven't had an academic leader in six years.
That's your opinion.
That's your, that's your.
That's a different subject, because he's talking about the vice president for academic affairs.
Your opinion.
Last piece.
But it's linked to the president.
David, I just want to correct one other thing. Trustee Jackson at the last meeting did provide a very brief update about the presidential search to the entire community, and it's in the minutes, so it's not, same update we all got, so you can't say nothing has been given by the committee.
But it was impromptu after the student HGA presentation.
But it was disseminated.
Right, she, it don't, don't assume it was impromptu.
It didn't seem very planned.
But you're making an assumption that she wasn't going to speak, and you can't do that, that's all.
All right, let's hold it. Okay, Frank?
And I just need to correct the record on one thing, the title that Kate Murray has taken is not chief counsel, and she and I have actually discussed this, I just want to be clear that the title that Chuck had was general counsel. Right, but never chief counsel, and just want to correct the record on that.
Frank? David, you have stirred the first controversy in 2016.
Congratulations.
I said now everybody's in a happy mood.
Here's a warm-up gap.
It was just a warm-up. So, Frank Resenda, I thought that rather than fight you all, I would join you all, I am the acting president of the NCC as table. And we are having an election next week to find a permanent leader for the NCCFT. I just want to say, first I want to say Happy New Year, and I want to welcome Ms. Green to the manhouse, okay?
Thank you very much.
I, I.
I'll try to bring sanity.
Yeah, well, I, I, I think. I was witness to your coronation at the legislative, the legislature, and the, they did give you some, you know, a heavy load to carry when they said they expected you, or were hoping that you were going to come to this board and bring some sort of cohesiveness to it, so good luck.
Thank you.
I want to say that as a member of the search committee, okay, that working with the co-chairs, Wanda Jackson and Arnold Drucker, I want to say that I think that you both conducted yourself with professionalism, I think that both of you have conducted yourself with, beyond my expectations, and I just want to say thank you.
Thank you very much.
So, the thing I wanted to say was just that, I don't want, and I don't want to belabor the point, but I will, the $13 million that it cost for the retirement incentive is not an unexpected blow to the college budget, because it would have cost $13 million to keep paying everybody if they all stayed, right? The reason, yes, the reason we are in the hole, okay, is because of low enrollment, all right, and unanticipated issues, okay? So, that's why we have this budget crisis. But I do hope that with a little better, I hate to use that word, capital planning in the future, that even though we have this $2 million bill every year coming to us, that we are not so conservative in our estimates of what's going to happen on this campus. Because I do understand that there is a philosophy in some financial circles that it, they would rather err on the side of losing money because it's always nicer to find money, all right, than to not have the money, okay? But maybe with a little more capital planning, we could anticipate our expenses and hire the full-time faculty that were absolutely grateful to this campus. So Happy New Year, everybody, welcome.
Okay, firstly, I want to throw this out because Frank said it. I was on the Presidential Search Committee, and I absolutely want to thank and congratulate our leaders for the wonderful job that they did. Secondly, I want to welcome our new trustee and Kate Murray to the group. And I'm saying this to the new trustee, I'm saying this to Kate. I've been coming to these meetings for about a year now. I'm a relatively newly-elected president of the Adjunct Faculty Association. And there's one thing that's clear to me. Every person in this room has the best interests of the students involved. There are times, probably too many times, that we're at odds with each other. But without a doubt, everybody in this room has the best interests of the students at heart, and I want you to know that I appreciate that. The next piece. We ran a fundraiser, the Adjunct Faculty Association, along with the Alumni Association for the NEST. It was a wonderful experience, particularly the night of the comedy fundraiser, because we all sat together and we laughed, and it was a great time. From the members of the CSEA who were there supporting us, the NCCFT people, to our members, to board of trustees people, to the students who were there. It was just a wonderful night, and I hope that night is reflective of things to come in terms of us coming together, particularly once we have a new president, and redefining maybe the culture that we've been in for too long. If we work together, it's going to be a new day for this college. The one thing that's lost is the great work that the faculty, particularly the staff, is doing for our students. This is a state-of-the-art operation, and sometimes we do ourselves a disservice when we act less than professionally when we interact with each other. In terms of the NEST fundraiser, we raised $6,615 in cash that the NEST is going to get, or has gotten, another $500 in food, and we had donations. A wonderful group of individuals donated $750 to pay for the venue and for the comics, and we got donations of about $660 in raffle prizes. So the sum total of that night was $8,465. Much of that, every time I went to shake the hand of a board of trustees member, I found cash in my hands, I found envelopes in my mailboxes, and I want to thank you guys for your support, too.
Tom Ruckner?
It's not you.
Paul?
I've got two pieces of business tonight. I'm a little bit scared to do the second one now. First, the Academic Senate Executive Committee would like to welcome our newest trustee, Linda Green, and Kate Murray, who I'm not quite sure what to call you now. We've got so many titles for her, but welcome.
Kathleen Catherine.
Kate Kathleen. The Academic Senate is made up of administrators, faculty, and students, and is the primary academic policy formulating body at Nassau Community College. With 27 committees that formulate policies ranging from curriculum to affirmative action to elections, we look forward to working with you to uphold Nassau's long tradition of shared governance, where the expertise of all parties is respected and listened to. As Judith Jacobs said to you in the legislature, Nassau community college is a jewel in Nassau's crown. In no small measure, due to our tradition of shared governance, and we look forward to your support in maintaining Nassau as an institution where students begin their intellectual and academic journey before transferring to other institutions, and where they can get the training that prepares them for successful, long-term careers. So welcome to both of you. Thank you for joining us. My second bit of business is the Academic Senate Executive, is that this Academic Senate Executive Committee asks for information about the presidential search, and I heard what you said, and I understand there's things that you can't talk about. This is an issue of paramount concern to the students, faculty, administrators, and trustees of the campus. But I'd also like to speak personally as a faculty member, and it's part of why we feel so strongly about this. I've been at Nassau for 15 years and anticipate being here for roughly 15 more. Like other faculty, I have a deep commitment to the students and to the institution. Faculty are the members of the academic community with the greatest longevity, in addition to many administrators who've been here for many years and spent their entire careers here. We recognize that, too. And therefore, we have a great stake in the decision of who will be president. Students will graduate, transfer, and move into the workforce, and we wish you all the best. That's what we're here to do. Board members' terms of appointment will end, but faculty members will be here for many years, and the decision of who will be president will affect me for the rest of my working life. So therefore, on behalf of the college community, but also of the faculty, we're eager to hear of the progress of the search, and would especially like to know as soon as possible, and again, as possible, we understand their roles here, so that we can understand the remainder of the process and prepare for it. The semester will begin in a week, and our planning, organization, and preparation for the semester are already in high gear. Among the questions we have are, when will the finalist names be announced? When are they coming to campus? What kind of opportunities will the campus community have to meet with them and give our feedback? And in general, what is the plan? We thank you. Thank you for your attention to this conference.
All right. I'd like to just stop in for a minute, and I'd like to, on behalf of the board of trustees, welcome Linda Green onto the board. I'd also like to welcome Kate Murray at the position of Intergovernmental Affairs. And I think that we need to just stop in for a moment and just talk about Chuck Cottola. Chuck Cottola has given 13 years of service here to the college. His position is an intergovernmental liaison, an expert in legislative process, former member of a United States senator's cabinet staff, leads to a wealth of experience that nobody on this campus can understand. The back-office operations of the United States Senate, the Nassau County Legislature, and the back-office halls of Nassau Community College are varied and sundry, but Chuck Cottola has handled them all with dignity, political aplomb, and grace, grace under fire. I, for members of the board of trustees, would like to say thank you very much for your years of service, Chuck. You will be sorely missed, and you can't escape because I do have your number. I'd like to just give you a round of applause. Chairman Gordon, members of the rest of the board, I want to thank you for those generous remarks. It has been an interesting time, but I do appreciate the support that I've been given, and again, I want to thank you for those very generous remarks. Thank you.
Any other comments from the board? If not, the next one is a scheduled meeting scheduled for Tuesday, February 9th, 16:00 PM, followed by the floor board meeting. The board will open a public session between 6:15 and 6:30, and resume the public session approximately at 7:30 PM. I request a motion to adjourn the meeting. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in the case? Motion carries. Meeting starts at 8:05. Thank you.